Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The municipality of Central Elgin would like to acknowledge that we gather on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory, territory, excuse me, of the Hood, Nisonne, Atawandran, and Mississauga Nation. We have all members of council present. Is there any disclosure of community interest? Seeing none, a motion to adopt the minutes.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, ruled by Council Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, October the 25th, 2021 be adopted.
Any questions or concerns? Would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Council Cravitz.
Yes.
Council Cluck.
Yes.
Council Fair.
Yes.
Council Wynn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And when now we have two delegations, the first one is the Elgin Group Police Services Board, which I happen to be chair of. So I'm very pleased tonight to welcome Inspector Mark Lucas here from the Elgin and the Elgin, sorry, and the Elgin Group Police Services Board to this meeting tonight to provide an update on the activities of the OPP and the board and to let you know some initiatives that are currently underway in Elgin County. I'd like to begin by introducing you to Inspector Mark Lucas, Elgin County's new detachment commander. Inspector Lucas joined the OPP in 1996 and began his career at the Burlington OPP detachment. He then served at the Cambridge OPP detachment and as a member of the emergency response team before joining the tactics and rescue unit in 2009. Mark is a graduate of the Law and Security Administration Program from Canador College and is currently in his final year at Wilford Laureate University, completing a Bachelor of Arts with Honors Degree in Policing with the goal of pursuing a Master of Public Safety degree. Inspector Lucas has received many specialist designations from both the Ontario Police College and the Canadian Police College and is a recipient of the Constable Mel Sinclair Memorial Award for Academic Excellence and with the Police Exemplary Service Medal for 20 years of service. I am now going to turn the presentation over to Inspector Lucas, who will discuss his work in Elgin County and provide an overview of the OPP's strategic priorities for 2020, 2022. Now, he sent in, Julie, are you sharing the thing or is he or are we sharing it?
I am. Mayor Martin, I had assumed you were, but in one quick second I could.
Thank you.
So what is your preference? Is Diane there? Would Diane prefer that I share?
Yeah, Diane didn't know that she was to share, so if you would, that would be great. And I assume once it comes up, Mark, that you will reveal who you are so they can see you.
I will, Madam Mayor, and if there's any issues, I can try and upload the report from my end. Okay, Julie's got it.
Yes. Thank you. You'll have to tell her when you want her to move the screens, I'm assuming.
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. It's an honor for me to be here with you tonight. And I very much enjoyed my time so far in Elgin County. It's been a lot of big changes since I got there in July, but we have been on par with trying to achieve our goals and objectives outlined in our 2020 to 2022 action report. If you'd like to go to the next page, I'd just like to take you through our strategic plan, which would be the next page. So with the OPP, we are focused on achieving our vision, mission, and values. Safe communities and a secure Ontario is our vision statement. Our mission is to serve our province by protecting the citizens, upholding law, and preserving public safety. Our values are entrenched with servant of pride, professionalism, and honor, interacting with respect, compassion, and fairness, and leading with integrity, honesty, and courage. Please go to the next page. Our priorities are focused on our people, our work, and our communities. And that's been basically, those have been my pillars since arriving at Elgin Detachment. Our people, I recognize very strongly that a healthy and resilient OPP will contribute to helping us achieve our objectives as outlined in our plan, our work by maintaining a responsive and evolving OPP. And with that, I've tried to make our detachment much more interactive and responsive to the needs of the community, particularly with respect to traffic complaints and how we're handling those traffic complaints and how we're working with our partners and stakeholders to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of our communities. And finally, our community is a collaborative and progressive OPP, relying on analytics and taking into account a lot of data so that we can streamline our police service to make sure it's responsive and efficient. Please go to the next page. Our action plan, this summarizes our 2020 to 2022 action plan. And there was a great deal of analysis and consultation, both with our regional operational analysts and with our community stakeholders to identify needs and priorities specific to Elgin County. Crime, being able to prevent and investigate property crime has been one of our priorities. Continued support and engagement in the intelligence-led for IOP and crime abatement strategy, which we recall, we refer to as CAS. And again, working in collaboration with local community resources and groups to facilitate a trusted and victim-centered approach towards processes, policies, and programs. Traffic safety on our roadways, waterways, and trails has been a big focus of my tenure so far since arriving in July. We've participated in a number of provincial traffic safety initiatives and maintained a very heavy presence on our highways and on our waterways and tried to integrate our ATVs and getting our ATV patrols much more active. We want to sustain a continuous and focused year-round initiative and again, create these strategies through education and enforcement. Other things that we've been working on at Detachment to try to generate more efficiencies is we want to keep officers on the front line as much as possible. We've been able to do this by integrating our collision reporting center and having that at detachments. So any property damage or minor accidents, we're able to deal with by sending people to the detachment to be dealt with at detachment, leaving frontline members available for calls for service. I'm very happy to say that our mental crisis response team worker has been a fantastic addition to our detachment. And I've just submitted a grant application for additional funding from the ministry for a second, a second officer worker. We've seen the benefits of this program and I'm hoping that we'll get some good news in the near future. And again, we are still working on our transfer of care protocol with St. Thomas' Elgin General Hospital. And so far, we've had excellent working relationship with STEG and we've noticed a quicker turnaround to get our officers back, return to the front line. With respect to the Community Safety and Policing Act, is that something you wanted me to touch on, Julie? Or did you want to go with your back?
Julie, are you going to do that or am I?
I think this is back to you, Mayor Martin.
All right. Okay, this is our Police Services Board and this Community and Safety Policing Act, which comes into effect in January, we assume. I want to thank Mark first of all for his comments and especially I want you all to realize that every time I have let him know about a complaint about traffic, he has done something about it immediately. He's been really responsive. Of course, with his whole team, but I mean, I have great respect already for Mark and how quickly he has responded to what we've needed. Mark's extensive experience and familiarity with Elgin County has already proven a great asset to our community and we look forward to working with him for many years. Back in April, Julie and I spoke to you about the new Community Safety and Policing Act. It is set to come into effect next year. Once it comes into effect, all Section 10 OPP boards will be dissolved and new OPP detachment boards will be established. Section 10 municipalities were required to submit a proposal indicating the preferred composition for the new OPP detachment boards. With direction from participating municipalities, Julie submitted an application for a status quo board in June. This includes one elected representative appointed by resolution from East Elgin, one elected representative appointed by resolution from the council of the municipality of Central Elgin, one community representative from West Elgin appointed by resolution jointly with township of Southold, the municipality of Dutton Dunwich, and the municipality of West Elgin, and two persons appointed by the left tenant governor in council. Go to the next slide then, Julie. Thanks. In September, a representative from the Ministry of the Solicitor General attended the Zone 6 meeting of the Ontario Association of Police Services Boards and the representative indicated the ministry has almost finished reviewing the board composition applications and that we should expect to hear back from them soon. Once the new board composition is confirmed by the ministry, the old board will dissolve and the new OPP detachment board will be established. This process will involve the passing of bylaws by each participating municipality and the reappointment of members. Once the new board is formed, board member composition will be reconsidered as part of the budgeting process. Sorry, board compensation. I apologize. So we had promised, this was a request that a couple of the participating municipalities had asked that we look at compensation and compare it. So Julie, the secretary administrator for it, conducted a compensation review earlier this year. The results of the review were shared with the Police Services Board and participating municipalities. The results can also be found on the Police Service Board website in the August 18th agenda package. We'll keep you updated on the board composition, application status, and we'll let you know once we hear back from the ministry. Thank you for your time and attention. If you have any questions about the application process or about Inspector Lucas's presentation, we'd be happy to answer them at this time. And thank you, Julie, for sharing the screens. I apologize. We'll work that out by the time we get to everybody. Any questions anyone has? Seeing none, got off easily. Thanks, Mark, and thanks, Julie. And we very much appreciate you being here and I do very much appreciate, Mark, the work you've done so far.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much for having me tonight. It's been my privilege to be able to share our strategic plan with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, your worship and members of council. Good night.
Good night, Julie. Our second delegation is from SCORE. That's the South Central Ontario Regional Economic Development Corporation. And Alison Warwick, who's the mayor of Thames Centre and a Middlesex County councillor and the SCORE vice chair, will be in attendance to provide an update. So we're going to turn it over to you now, Alison, and I don't know, are you sharing the screen? Or Whit is sharing the screen. Okay.
No, great. Thank you, Mayor Martin, and good evening to everyone. It's a pleasure to be able to be here tonight. I do want to go through, I just want to bring the regrets of our Kimarals, who's usually doing these presentations, and our chair, Robert Chambers, who's probably busy harvesting corn tonight. And no offense to anybody, but he feels he has to get that corn in. So I just, here you are with the B team, so I'm going to start. And I know that some of you, Mayor Martin and Deputy Mayor Marks, are very well familiar with SCORE and having a presentation recently at Elgin County. This might be a little bit repetitive, but I'll do my best to go through and keep it interesting for everybody. So as you know, South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation is a not-for-profit economic development corporation owned by the counties of Brant, Elgin, Middlesex, Norfolk, and Oxford. The five county partnership came together in 2007 as a result of the decline in the tobacco industry and a need to share resources and diversify the regional economy. The vision was to diversify the regional economy while capitalizing on natural strengths and long-term commitment to regional prosperity. The five counties share similar geography, economic base, and agricultural food and manufacturing as well as tourism. So we represent the five counties, which is 28 municipalities, 285 communities, which is home to plus 604,000 adult residents. And so we have a presentation for Central Elgin and you've kindly put it on the screen, Diane. Thank you very much. Can we go to the next slide, please? Right, so starting off, SCORE has three strategic priorities. The first one being infrastructure supporting economic development, the second being human capital needed for economic development, and the third being sector development focusing on agriculture and food. So we have first here transportation. And we're very lucky that our SCORE member, board member, former chair, Stephen Molnar, Mayor Molnar from Tussenberg, has been asked to be on the Ministry of Transportation Mayor's Task Force. And that's a direct line to shaping transportation across southwestern Ontario. Community transportation is one of our topics. We look for shared efficiencies in community transportation, cost savings. We've shared RFPs for technical work and we are working on mapping uploads to workforce planning boards. So in that, in that regard, if you're looking for a job, you'll be able to look onto a map and see if there is transportation to the business that you wish to attend. Now, I know that Central Elgin doesn't have a transportation, city transportation piece at this point in time, but I do know that Elgin will be completing a county master transportation plan. And if there's anything that SCORE can help with, we'd be very happy to attend any meetings. Now, something that is a little bit more relevant to Central Elgin than some of the other counties is rail. We know the importance of the short line rail in your community, especially with IGCP plant. It's really important. We estimated that there's over 800 jobs affected across this region and most of the businesses that are affected are in the manufacturing and agricultural supports. So you know, that's a very important file and Mayor Molnar has taken a lead in this with the Transportation Committee. Broadband is next, and I think we all know what it's like to live in the country and not have great broadband. And that's something that we're slowly, the wheels are turning and they're getting across, but we don't miss a chance to work on getting that out there to our different ministers, whether it be infrastructure or education or whoever, that that is something that there is a huge rural-urban divide in broadband. Another key piece for Central Elgin, of course, is the expansion of the natural gas lines. That energy is very important, not only to our industries, but to our farmers that like Robert are up there trying to dry corn and doing the different things and trying to keep the costs down on that. So next slide, please. I talked a little bit about this already, so I don't think we have to dwell. But yes, it's 800-plus jobs across the region and our key business partners and opportunities are in Elmer. Our key infrastructure is from St. Thomas to Norfolk and we support Elgin businesses and agricultural sector through the short line rail. So it's a very important piece. Next slide, please. So human capital, as I touched on earlier, the workforce. We're focusing on the agricultural workforce capacity building. We had a great program with Fanshawe and also with Conestoga College where we partnered with them. We had an agri-management program and that was training operators as well as different things around the farm that people are looking for information for. Conestoga College, we had a great partnership with Libro and this SCORE and Conestoga College for an agricultural equipment operator program. And I had talked to somebody about this before and saying that you, it's really important to be able to gain this experience off the farm as well. Not everybody who has a working farm has the time to invest in training. So having our students train in the fairly complicated technology and a lot of our tractors and other implements are important now. So this program was very beneficial. We had support for our seasonal workers at the outset of COVID-19 and ongoing. And I know with our highly intensive crops like berries and pumpkins and different things, this is an extremely important piece. And our education, we're partnerships with our post-secondary institutions. When I recently presented to our new Minister of Agriculture, she was very interested in this piece because that's something that they're trying to support as well. Next slide, please. So sector development, we do have partnerships with the OFA. One of them was Feeding Your Future, which was a number of videos over different sectors and that's available on our website if you want to review that. The other program that we have was called Always in Season and that was a county promotional guide. Policy programming inputs at provincial and federal level. Again, we're always trying to contact different MPs, MPPs, and trying to get information from and to them as well. And we look for ongoing issues for the ag community to proponent. And also, this is a topic that's been ongoing for a while and that's the development of hazelnut industry support. And again, that's a long-term crop that, again, needs that guidance. Next slide, please. So 25 delegations and meetings with cabinet ministers over the past two years regarding issues specific to this region, ongoing communications with other levels of government supporting regional and individual county efforts, collaborating with other organizations such as the Elgin Middlesex Oxford Workforce Planning Board, collaboration with the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus on Rural Data Dissemination and Sharing. And we've written 12 letters of support to other organizations resulting in successful funding applications, which actually are over a million dollars. So we're pretty proud of ourselves with their assistance to that. Next slide, please. So the partnership that we have with the five counties, it creates immediate value, but more importantly cumulative value over time. And that's something that we've discussed, that this organization becomes stronger each time as we know each other's strengths and weaknesses. We can help each other and really jump on the topics that are important to everyone. So again, action-oriented organizations, we focus on strategic planning and implementation. We have recognition and a positive reputation as a region. And I'll tell you, we get very good feedback when we do delegations with our provincial ministers because they can rely on us to give them information. We try to work with them. We try to provide solutions to problems that are coming. So again, we're very welcome at the table. The ability to tackle projects and issues that are larger in scale than one municipality can take on individually. And again, that those numbers, the amount of people that we have in those regions really wake people up when they look at that and see how many people we represent. But we're also small enough to reach consensus and move forward on areas of focus. We have the ability to attract and leverage funding on a regional scale. And when I say small enough, there are two members from each board, so there's 10 people. So there's a one in five voice at the table. So it's quite a good conversation within the municipalities or regions that are joining us. Next slide, please. So we've accomplished a great deal as a five-county partnership. We're good neighbors and we're working for the good of all. And I think that's a really rural sentiment. We all know that in the rural areas, we do have to count on our neighbors. So that concludes the presentation. I thank you. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. As I said, I am the B team. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Alison. Does anyone have any questions for Alison? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Not a question, but a comment. Good, great job, Alison. I don't know if all, everyone on Central Elgin Council knows, the county of Elgin are back with SCORE on your trial. They were original members and for whatever reason decided to leave. Ketchibah from Bam, they stayed on as members and he's convinced us to go back on trial. So myself and Mayor French from Elmer attend along with Ed. And I've been quite pleasantly surprised and I'm full support of joint. I'll be recommending that we continue. I can see the benefits. We've had some great presentations. We've had presentation, I remember the one from Brant recently on their economic development. We've had some real good presentations and it's to see your peers and see what they're doing. It's, you do that comparison and it's good information. So I've been pleasantly surprised when I, the meetings I've attended. So I'll be certainly urging us that we stay on up to date.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for those kind words. Deputy Mayor Marks, those are very kind words indeed. And, and we do appreciate that Elgin is back on it. And as I said in the presentation, you might not see immediate, immediate results, but it's a cumulative result where we work together. And it's just like a term of council. You have things that you want to achieve, but it always isn't done right away. It takes a lot of wheels in motion, as we all know.
Anyone else have any questions for Alison? Just one comment I would make, Alison, and that was when you mentioned the hazelnut project. Because I have been part of the Southern Ontario Nut Growers since its inception. It was a wedding present, actually. So 49 years ago, they formed. And the, we've had, we had hazelnuts, but the biggest challenge is getting blight-resistant hazelnuts. This area is not bad for growing hazelnuts, getting the blight-resistant ones. And I know they've been working with Farrow Rocher and with contracts and various setups. So glad to hear that SCORE is involved in that.
Yeah. Thank you. It's a very interesting file and it sounds like you've got the gift that keeps on giving for your wedding present.
Anyone, no other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Alison. We very much appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing everybody.
Yes, nice to see you again, too. Okay, we're going to correspondence and we have one requiring action and that is from the user fee committee on the rates and fees by law. Does anyone have any questions on that report? Any comments? Diane, go ahead, Council Cravitz.
Just one, the recommendation about the parking lot by the pharmacy and the doctor's office.
Behind, yeah.
Was there any consideration given for dedicated parking spots for the pharmacy?
Mr. Fairan?
Through you, Madam Mayor, actually, the pharmacy actually owns three or four spots in there already. It's part of their property.
The one's right behind the pharmacy, I believe, yes.
And I believe they're signed for pharmacy parking.
Okay. It says reserved on them. I don't know, it doesn't necessarily say pharmacy, but it just says that it's reserved.
I just had a concern about, you know, that could be for employee parking, but does that allow parking for the general public going to the pharmacy?
Well, and the one thing I noticed was there used to be two 15-minute parking spots, which were perfect because when you go to the pharmacy, usually not more than 15 minutes. Whereas if you go to the doctor, usually ours, you didn't park there. But I noticed they've now, one is the community policing parking spot and there's only one 15-minute one there and then two handicapped ones, but.
Okay, yeah, just when the time comes that we do, if we do make that a paid parking, I'd like to see consideration given for the 15-minute parking spots for the pharmacy purposes.
Mr. Fairan?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, if council approves the rate by law or rates that are proposed and implement the paid parking, staff report back with a more detailed report of how that will be implemented in each of the parking lots.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'm sorry, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Similar to what Council Cravitz, I had, like, I think there's an outstanding report. It's a chance to make a huge impact on our deficit as far as beach cleanup, et cetera, et cetera. So this, this is really going to help everybody. Just applaud staff for this. I've, I'm speaking out loud, an open mind, but oh, there's been discussion parking for the Legion, Parkinson's. The Legion's parked across the street for years and years and years. I know the property's changed hands. There's opinions on handshake agreements and that. I don't mind passing this, I'm in favor of this. And I've asked Mr. Shipway, this can be amended if some, some new evidence comes up. And if we pass this, it can be amended. Is that a fair statement?
Mr. Shipway?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, yeah, any bylaw that council passes with the appropriate number of votes can be amended by council.
So it's not set in stone, but it certainly, the large part of this, I, you know, it's a revenue source and I appreciate. and I'm appreciative, it's going to help our budgeting, so I think that's what the public has been reminding us. You know, the tax rates, et cetera, are tapped out, and so this has been a little long ways to helping that, so. And that's a result of staff initiative, so I'm very appreciative of that.
Councilor Ferrin?
I think it should be noted that when we discussed this, we did say that it would only affect the Legion from whatever time they open in the morning until about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. So it's not 24 hours a day, it's only during that period. So it, they may find there's enough flexibility there that they'd be okay with it because I think, I'm not sure, but I've been thinking that most of their activity would be after 5:00 in the Legion.
Right, and there is parking along the street and beside the Legion as well. So it's not totally without parking, but it certainly expands into that area, especially in the evening. Councilor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think having reviewed the user fees is something that definitely needed to be done after two years. A lot of good changes were made in there, including the annual inflation index within the bylaw. Makes it simpler for the committee, but that does not preclude the, sort of, the annual or semi-annual meeting of the committee to review the actual rates. Consolidating the bylaws into one, so that there's no rates in other bylaws. All of the user fee rates are in this one, is, I think, is a wonderful idea. What I would just caution is on the, I'll say, the ramifications of implementing, let's say, the new parking fees in the new lots. So there will be neighboring areas in there, sort of the on-street parking, that through the EG1 bylaw, we would have to look at to make sure that there isn't any overflow into those areas that creates angst for any of the neighborhoods. But that will come later.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Diane, would you read the motion, please?
And may the motion be moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Councilor Fair, that the use of the EGS 0121 rates and fees by law be received for information, and that staff be directed to bring forward a rates and fees by law pursuant to appendix C for council consideration, and that staff be directed to bring forward an amendment to file under the G1 traffic and parking by law as outlined in the report USC 0121 for council consideration.
Thank you, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we have correspondence for information, there are just the two. The one from QP and the one from the Port Stanley BIA. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Diane, would you read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that correspondence pages number one and number two be received as information and filed.
Call the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we're moving down to the Director of Financial Services, Treasurer, and this is concerning the Port Stanley Waterfront Master Plan. You've read the report, questions or comments? Councilor Fair?
I'm just wondering, over the last number of years, we've had a lot of people from the community talk about planting trees, about putting rocks there, about doing temporary structure there for shade and so on. We've had people talk about benches. We've also had environmental group, school, class that wanted to do things. And I don't think we ever really properly responded to it. What I would like, maybe rather than spending this $80,000 and curbing some of their creative community spirit, maybe we should give them more time to come forward with more ideas and actually recognize them and let them formally submit these, so that down the road, when we do, if we do require organization or management of their ideas, that we give them lots of time to do it on their timeline, as opposed to saying we're going to box them in and allow them public participation for a few months or whatever during the study that's going to be back in June. But I think that's cutting them very short, and I don't think we've given them all fair opportunity to represent all their ideas, many of them are paying for it, and especially that class of environmental students. I think, I think we owe it to them to allow the community to be more creative, submit more information, and then look at this. I don't think there's a panic to get this study done right now. I think it would be great if we allow the community a lot more input and a lot more ideas and some time to do that.
Yeah, the one thing, we did go out to tender, we already agreed to do this, and we went out to tender, and I gather this, this group that have been chosen are very highly recommended. And I did comment even today, I talked with Mr. Shipway and told him that it's very important that we do consult these, especially the eco-class at the Kettle Creek Public School, who have been very eager to be involved, and certainly the consultants will, they can do an online consultation with them or whatever. But Mr. Shipway, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, obviously, council can do, provide direction on this however they'd like. On September 13th, staff presented the report with the entire terms of reference for this process, which council approved, so we subsequently issued the RFP for this process. And then it's designed to attempt to deliver on one of council's strategic priorities to move forward with the waterfront master plan. And it does include significant amounts of consultation, and the recommended service provider has some fairly unique methodologies to both consult and present the proposals from the public,[1030.02][1030.05]integrated into, integrated into a plan for council consideration. So ultimately, we can move forward with whatever council directs, but that's the history behind how we got to this point.
Councilor Fair?
I just wanted, I was, I was a little surprised that it would happen so quickly. I hadn't anticipated that it would all be a completed job by June. And that's, that's all, I just, I think, I think I would feel much more comfortable if the community was given more time to do more submissions and really reach out to the community more without a hard line on it, but...
I will say that the Port Stanley Village Association have already submitted many requests. They've been spending ages on it, they just want to see it get moving. So I'm not so certain they want it delayed. I would like to see it completed during this term of council, that we know where it's going. We've been involved all along, I've been involved, you know, since we acquired the harbor, and lots of thoughts about what should be going out there, and we're very thankful that we were able to get so much green space, and that's what this, a lot of this will involve, too. So, Mr. Ferrin?
Through you, Madam Chair, in fairness, there's all kinds of ideas, but there's no plan. And every bit of public amenity space that we've developed since Central Augen, we've done that with a plan that's been informed by significant consultation. So Turvey Park, Eastwood Park, we had consultation meetings on site, we allowed people to provide their input. And then that was taken away by a consultant to develop one or more plans, and then council of the day then determined what the plan was going to be, so it could be implemented. And if there was, you know, third parties, you know, service clubs that wanted to raise money towards the park by sponsoring a certain amenity, they could do that. But I think the key is, is that we need a plan in place, because right now, it's, everyone has their different ideas about what the waterfront should look like, and it's not cohesive. And in fairness, we've had situations in the past where we've actually had to clean up situations like that because public space kind of developed over time. And case in point was Glover Park, that's a prime example that, you know, I can recall. And I think at the point in time, there was probably three memorial plaques and so many trees, and you couldn't even use the space before we did anything with it. So I think that's the key, is that we're trying to get a plan in place, so people can, can start taking on some of these projects and improving things.
I think it's very important, I agree with you, to have a plan, what goes where, and who then can do what, rather than like Glover Park, which people did just keep putting in. And then they were all upset when some of the trees came out, when we did finally come up with the plan. So it's better we do it before it's developed, and we do too much helterskeltern. I know the stones, that was just, they asked for the stones as a temporary thing, said they'd be happy to move them out when other things were ready to go in. Councilor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While it was, it was nice to see that there were four or five proposals submitted, while one of those was maybe more local than, than the others, it would have been nice to kind of have that local input, but we can still get that local input through the community groups and the schools and such this way. And I would have to say that I am not familiar with this particular company think at all, but when I did a little bit of digging and asked a few questions, it seems that they have actually done work in Kingston and in Barry. And I recall some of our earlier conversations, there was a lot of reference to the Barry waterfront and how good that looks and the work that went into that, and just knowing that this company has that experience and a little bit of that background, and just also kind of just a new and a fresh outlook on it as opposed to others. So again, it's, it's not a local person, which maybe would have been, been nice, but I feel comfortable with this selection.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'm excited by this, I'm ready to support the staff recommendation.
Mrs. Wilson, would you read the motion?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Row, second by Council Fair, that report FS 2021 be received as information, and that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Augen accept the proposal of Tautcher Design Inc., operating as state design for 2021, 27 Port Stanley Waterfront Master Plan in the amount of $88,220 plus all applicable taxes.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you. Now we have the Director of Fire Rescue Services, Fire Chief, the monthly alarm activities report. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report FS 1321, three monthly alarm activities report for October of 2021 be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you, and now the Director of Asset Management Development Services, monthly building and bylaw report. Any comments, other than that we just seem to be building, building, building? Yes.
The only thing I wondered, I usually don't see any fines or anything. Do, I know education is probably the first option, but I'm thinking that there would be maybe more fines in bylaw enforcement, you know, I don't know how many repeats, I see, I see a lot of them in there, you know, that there's written complaints, there's site visits and so on, some are resolved, and... But I don't see any fines, I'm not saying just blindly fine everyone, but I'm just wondering why we have no fines, period.
Mr. Ferrin?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the intent is, through bylaw enforcement, is to try to achieve compliance to the municipality's bylaws, so whether it's property standards, lot maintenance, then it, the first and foremost goal is to try to achieve compliance. Some of those things do take some time. We're not able to just blindly go in and just say, here's your ticket. We do have to educate, we do have to give property owners a chance to remedy the situation. I can assure you that we do issue tickets, but as far as fines, that could be, whether we realize those or not, they can go to provincial offenses, it could take months to receive those, the status of what those, those tickets were. So people have the ability to have their day in court, and most do take that, that right. So it's not like we aren't issuing tickets, but our first and foremost goal is to get compliance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? If not, read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Council Fair, that report AMDS 4021 will be out for 2021. Bylaw report be received as information.
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Okay, well, there are bylaws, does anyone have any one, any concern with any one that they would like? Yes, Councilor Rowe?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just two questions. The first one is on the bylaw 2653 for the Harbor Secondary Plan.
Yes.
Just on the transportation piece, I'm just still not clear what happens to William Street north of Bridge/George Street? Does it become a one-way at the entire length of that road to the north? Northbound, what happens to it?
Mr. Ferrin? Or Mr. Brooks?
The, the intent is, William Street north of Bridge Street would remain status quo the way it is now. It's one-way for a section of it, and then two-way for, I would say, for the first 40 meters north of Bridge Street, you would stay the way it is.
Okay, so I got a different impression when I read it, but if it stays, then that's...
Yeah, it, I've always found that one confusing, because the other end says, you know, no entrance, it's definitely one-way, but then I see people coming out the other one, and I think, okay, how did they get there? I didn't realize it was two-way for a certain distance.
Yeah. And my second question is regarding bylaw 2654, adopt the investment policy. It just mentions that an annual report would be every year, obviously, annual. So is the first one this year or next year, I guess would be my question?
Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Madam Mayor, so that would commence, the annual report would come in 2023 because there's nothing to report at this time. So the remainder of the year, the Director of Finance will be meeting with LAS and the One Investment Fund, getting everything prepared, and then we'll start laddering those investments in, in 20, in the beginning of 2022. So then that report would come at year-end in February of the, of the following year, and it would outline terms and all of that relevant information.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're all okay, would you, if we're okay to take them all together, then go ahead, Diane, read the first motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that bylaws 2653, first and second time.
Call the vote?
Council Row? Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Next motion?
Next motion on that bylaws, moved by Council Fair, second by Council Row, that bylaws 2651, 2652, 2653, or, you go a third time and finally pass?
Call the vote?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Krebbitz?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sorry, I didn't hear if you called me.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Martin? Council Lynn?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes, sorry. Okay, and now, we don't have any public notice or notice of motions. Under Other Business, just the one that I would like to mention is, as you know, we all received an email about our budget and that it's online. I have been on and, and quite a bit of time yesterday reading a lot of it, and it really is an excellent document, it is so clear and so easy to see exactly what we're spending, on what, where the money is coming from, if it's from reserves or taxation or whatever, and our development charges or... And or development charges or whatever. And I found it just excellent so far. I certainly haven't been able to go through every single bit of it. But what we would, I would like to encourage you and the public, if they're listening, go on our website and go through it. And if you have questions about it or concerns, you can contact staff, you can contact council. And council, if you have questions you want clarified, please contact the staff and get those clarified before we actually have our meeting in December. So that you've got your clear about everything that's in it, then you'll know what types of things you might, or if there are any changes you want to propose. Just make sure you get it clear. There were a couple of things I didn't know that I'd already gotten through and got those clarified today. So. Just encouraging everyone to have a look at it because it really is an excellent document. Any other business that anyone wanted to bring up tonight? Seeing none, we do not have a closed session. So would you read the motion on the confirmatory bylaw?
The motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Counselor Fair, that bylaw 2655, we read it first and the second time.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Counselor Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Next one.
Last motion on bylaw. Moved by Counselor Fair, second by Counselor Rowe, the 2655, we read it third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
Counselor Credit.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Counselor Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the final motion. And they've got to fix that clock at the back because it says it's going on for 9:00 and it is. It's going on for 8:00.
Move by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Counselor Rowe, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, November the 8th, 2021, be adjourned at 7:52. And the next meeting of council is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, 2021, by 7:00.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
Counselor Credit.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Counselor Win.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you.